The Tuesday, January 18th, 2022 regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone? Counselor Boudreaux?
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Ronald Cormier? Absent. Counselor General Owitz?
Present.
Counselor Harder?
Present.
Counselor Heath?
Present.
Counselor Mack?
Present.
Counselor Tyros?
Present.
Counselor Walsh?
Present.
President Kuzinskas?
Present. The oath of office for Counselor-elect James Boone will not happen this evening because he did notify us at time that he was not going to be able to be at tonight's meeting. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the part of allegiance.
Almighty God, we came here to bring us together this evening, inspire us to worthy deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray thee bless and protect all the people of our city, and to so guide and inspire us that we may deliberate in unity and harmony. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open meeting recording notice. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chairs to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? Reading of minutes of prior meetings. We'll begin with the reading and approval of the November 29th, 2021 informal meeting, November 2029th, 2021 special meeting, and December 6th, 2021 regular meeting. Is there emotion on the floor? Counselor Walsh?
In the absence of Counselor Ronald Cormier, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes for these three meetings and accept them as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Mack, to accept the meeting minutes as presented. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Heath?
Mr. Dean, I was not here for those meetings, so I abstained out of it.
Going to be a standing? Got it. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion passes. Public hearings. We do have a public hearing this evening. Item 10591, a petition by National Grid to install one single-owned pole on Church Street beginning at a point approximately 255 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Marquette Street and Church Street, and continuing approximately 20 feet in the north direction, install 40-feet C2 pole 9 to provide power to 116 Church Street. The public hearing is now open. The public hearing notice to Butters, January 5th, 2022, to Butters and other interested parties pursuant to the provisions of mass general law, chapter 166, section 22. You hereby notify that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the City Council Chamber, second floor, City Hall, and 95 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Massachusetts, on the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid for permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under, along, and across the falling public way. Church Street, petition by National Grid to install one single-owned pole on Church Street beginning at a point approximately 255 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Marquette Street and Church Street, and continuing approximately 20 feet in a north direction, install 40-foot C2 pole 9 to provide power to 116 Church Street. A sketch of the proposed pole location is attached for your identification. City Council of Gardner, by T.T. Seraphin, City Quick. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Would you like to? Please come to the podium, sit your name and the company you represent for the record, or your address, please.
Hi, my name's Javier Morales. I represent National Grid. And as you described, we're here to request the approval for that grant of location for the pole. It's a new pole to serve a housing complex that's adjacent to increase their reliability.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else present in favor? Is there anyone else present in favor? Okay, is there anyone in opposition? Is there anyone here in opposition? Is there anyone here in opposition? The public hearing is now closed. Communications from the mayor, appointments, item 10593, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Rachel J. Roberts to the position of the executive secretary for term expiring January 3rd, 2023. Is there a motion? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The position of executive secretary is not confirmed by the council, as the council does not confirm departmental secretary positions. However, I thank the mayor for this communication and move to place the appointment on file.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros to place the item on file, seconded by Counselor Craig Cormier. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Boudreaux?
In terms of kindness, professionalism, and just a overwhelmingly happy smile, you can't beat Rachel Roberts. She worked outstandingly hard for our community during the turnover from Mayor Hawke to Mayor Nicholson, and which happened during the beginning months of the COVID-19 pandemic. And she did it all with a smile, with a lot going on outside of City Hall for her as well, including getting married. Rachel is a wonderful lady, and I think she is an asset to our community and City Hall. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on the motion? Mayor Nicholson, I'd like to ask, since this is your appointment, I'd like to ask if you have any words that you'd like to offer?
Thank you very much, Madam President. As Counselor Boudreaux said, Ms. Roberts, or Mrs. Roberts, I should say, has been an asset to the city since she was first hired in this position seven years ago. She's really taken on a lot of the role. She's undertaken, actually, some extra professional development classes as well. She's currently studying her Massachusetts Certified Purchasing certification as well, just to, again, try to bring that extra breadth of knowledge to the office, which is something that that office, those who have held that position in the past have not gone for. But it's just another way to just broaden what we're able to offer to the mayor's office. She's got a willingness to learn, and she brings that attitude that just gets the job done every day. I'm very happy to put forward her work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion passes. Item 10594, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of John M. Flick to the position of city solicitor for term expiring January 3rd, 2023. Is there a motion on the floor? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The position of city solicitor by section six of our city charter is not confirmed by the council. It is the mayor's authority, though I again thank him for this communication and move that we place the appointment on file.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Craig Cormier to place the, to place the measure on file. Is there discussion on the motion? Mayor Nicholson, would you like to offer anything about your appointment?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Sure thing. Mr. Attorney Flick has held this position for the past 14 years. During that time, I've been very happy with his performance. I've been here in office as well. Happy to put forward his appointment. I know Counselor Tyros did say that this isn't confirmed by the council, but he's certainly been a familiar face to most people here in the city and happy to put forward as far as.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Motion passes. Item 10595, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Ethan Collodney to the position of assistant city solicitor for term expiring January 3rd, 2023. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer this appointment to the Appointments Committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Mack to refer the item to the Appointments Committee for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Motion passes. Item 10597, a communication from the fire department regarding newly appointed firefighters, Christopher Dauphinai and Jamie Henderson. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the communication from Chief Lagoi. I keep the council informed on filling these critical roles in our community, and I move to place these appointments on file.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Craig Cormier to place a communication on file. Is there discussion on the motion? Mayor Nicholson, would you like to offer anything on these appointments from the fire department?
Sure thing, Madam President. This is something that per the city ordinance is I don't appoint the firefighter. The chief has the sole appointing authority for firefighters. That's also why they're not confirmed over by the city council for that order. However, I've received very favorable reports from both the chief and the captain, who are both here, and am happy to see us grow in the department and fill some of the vacancies we had, and getting some soon-to-be very familiar faces in the area.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? The motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear in those who have been appointed here this evening. We will reconvene after the swearing is completed and call the meeting back to order at that time. Excuse me, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Orders. At this time, I am going to call Counselor James Walsh to take item 10596, as I will be participating in the discussion of this item.
Item before the council is item 10596, ordered that there be an escape or appropriated the sum of $200,000 from free cash to the golf course equipment expense account. Report from the Finance Committee. Counselor Kuzinskas.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. On this item, the Gardner Municipal Golf Course had a very successful year last year, and so they had a larger amount of retained earnings than they had originally budgeted for. Bill Frank from the, who's the department head of the golf course and oversees all of its operations, has seen shortages in their supplies and items that need to be replaced and need to be phased out, and wanted to order some items before the, the shortages and what they had became even further out from what they're, what they have already. And so this includes, as we have in our packet, includes some, some mowers that they have, a current request, and they're basically going to be replacing those. And so the golf course operates on an enterprise account, and which is, basically means that the money that they have, that funds their operations comes only from money that they collect from their operations. So in the case of the golf course, it is membership fees, rental fees, and no tax dollars are legally allowed to be used to support its operations. And so any funding that goes from this particular appropriation that goes unused will go directly back into the enterprise account in this case. So they, we also, we also wanted to, want to consider that Director Frank's letter has an appropriation request that's less than the 200, a little bit less than the $200,000, but there's a lot of volatility of pricing in the current markets, markets that is based off of conversations that the mayor had had with Director Frank about the time sensitive of the sensitivity of the items. So there could be items that are purchased now that the mayor may not even receive for this golf season, but they need to get them in the queue to do so. And so just because of, for that reason, and also because prices have been changing, there's a little bit of a difference, a contingency, if you will, on what the order is. And so with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the order transfer.
Motion made by Counselor Kuzinskas to pass the orders. They're second of the motion, seconded by Counselor Tyros. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor General Owitz?
Yes, as a member of the Golf Commission, I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the court call the roll.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh.
Good work.
Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, there are none. Reports of standing committees, safety committee, item number 10590, an application for license to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles, class two for Bryant's Auto Sales located at 549 West Broadway. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, we had a chance to meet on this item today. This is an application for renewal for longstanding business. The police department had no issues with this business, nor did the planning department. The clerk has asserted that this business is up to date on taxes and all other items necessary to renew this application. Therefore, I move we approve this application.
Motion by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Harder to approve the application. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? The motion passes. Service Committee, item 10591. We had a public hearing on this item earlier this evening. A petition by National Grid to install one single-owned pole on Church Street beginning at a point approximately 255 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Marquette Street and Church Street, and continuing approximately 20 feet in a north direction, install 40-foot C2 pole 9 to provide power to 116 Church Street. Report from the Public Service Committee.
Public Service Committee met with a representative of National Grid on this item at our meeting last Thursday. He explained the need for it, which was outlined once again during the public hearing. This is to provide more reliable service to the, what is generally known as the high-rise senior apartment complex on Church Street. We also learned upon inquiry that there will be one pole that will be discontinued as a result of this project, and the utility has a plan in place for, for removal of the pole after notice to the proper people, the other people or the other utilities that are using the pole. So with that in mind, the committee voted unanimously in favor of the petition, and I move that we, the council grant the petition.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor General Owitz to grant the petition. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? The motion passes. There is no unfinished business. It matters for reconsideration. Moving into new business, Counselor Heath?
Madam President, I don't have any new business. However, I would like to thank everybody for accepting me in. You guys definitely had a lot of kind words the last time, and you guys threw me off. So I just want to say you guys have accepted me with open arms. I appreciate it, and the support has been, you know, it's been well-received. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tyros?
Nothing new this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor General Owitz?
Nothing new this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mack?
Nothing new this evening, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Mack. Counselor, Counselor Cormier?
I'd just like to congratulate our two new firefighters and welcome them to the force and thank them for their service.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boudreaux?
It's been cold. It's been snowing. I just want to remind everyone at home to keep an eye out for parking ban announcements on Code Red, on Facebook, on all your social media. Sometimes I go outside and yell with my hands up in the air, so that, keep an eye out for that, too. I would also like to thank the DPW employees for doing a bang-up job the last couple of snowstorms. It's not easy when they come day after day, but they do it, and they do it with a smile on their face. So thank you to them. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boudreaux. Counselor Harder?
Nothing new this week, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Walsh?
As I mentioned, Public Service Committee met for the first time in this new term last Thursday, introduced ourselves to the, a number of the management people at the Department of Public Works, and were graciously received by them. We had three appeals of waters and sewer bills before us. Two of them, one of them was postponed, one of them was granted partially, and the other one was denied. The director invited the members of the committee, and I extend that to other members of the council who haven't already done it, to join he and others for a tour of the various Department of Public Works facilities, water, sewer, wastewater, waste, sewer's treatment and disposal, water pumps, water facilities, water treatment facility. The director extends his, an invitation to all the counselors to join him for a tour of those at a time that you can arrange. I think it's a worthwhile thing to do to be aware of all the things, because it's, you'll be surprised if you haven't done it already, how many, how much work and how much effort, how many facilities we have to provide portable drinking water to the wall of the city and to dispose of our waste in a safe and proper manner. So I hope everybody will take advantage of that. Thank you, Counselor. Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. And this evening, I would like to acknowledge an award that Mayor Nicholson received. It's the Innovation Award from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. I want to congratulate you on that and the good work from your departments putting that together. It's for the interactive map that was put together by the GIS coordinator that we're able to, to see. And Mayor Nicholson, if you want to elaborate on that a little bit, I just wanted to congratulate you on the award. I think it's fantastic, but it really, I think, aids in transparency in the city, and I think it's something that definitely other cities and towns can use as a model to, to do that for their residents as well.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I appreciate it. It is an award that was received from the Massachusetts Municipal Association for that interactive map that you can access on the city's homepage on the website. It does list every active project that the city has had active in the past 12 months. Small description of the project, small picture of the project. On the map, you can see the location of it. If you click on the star, it also tells you the approximate cost, approximate timeline, funding source of the funding as well. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. And I also wanted to ask if you'd comment on the National Guard?
Certainly, Madam President. Haywood did receive nine members of the National Guard to assist in certain operations at the hospital during a period of being somewhat short-staffed, and that's something that's been experienced by several hospitals across the Commonwealth. Governor Baker, at this point, has activated about 1,300 members of the National Guard, of which Haywood received nine in the first deployment of 500 members, and then an additional nine started this morning at Haywood. So they're at 18 total at their Gardner campus, and there are two total at their Athol campus. They are assisting in certain screening procedures when you enter the hospital, the temperatures, hand sanitizing stations, the mask stations, because by state regulations, you are required to switch your mask upon entry to make sure it's a sterile mask. They are also assisting in what's called patient watching. That means if someone's under critical care, under the ICU, or the emergency room, and they're required to have someone with them to monitor what the different machines are saying. Those members of the National Guard who go there, well, as certain other procedures as well. Gardner has the second-highest percentage of National Guardsmen who are at that, at Haywood's facility compared to the other hospitals throughout the state. Not the most number there, but the most per population served by that hospital for this, the state-designated catchphrase of the hospital population. So that is another thing that is happening here. They are all residents of North Central Massachusetts, Gardner, Pittsburgh, Leominster, Westminster, Compton. Like I said, three of them are from Gardner of the 18 as well. So we do have a little local community connection with those members as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. I, you know, I wanted to acknowledge that because I think, you know, it's important to know that if you've heard about the, the National Guard that have been, you know, assigned to different communities, that we do have a presence here at Haywood, and we just received even more of a presence. And I think it's important, especially in the spike of COVID cases that have happened, we're getting that support in our hospital. As many people have seen, there's a lot of medical staff and workers and nurses and doctors that it just seemed to be really overworked lately. So we do have some additional support in our community, which I think is fantastic. So thank you for the explanation, Mayor Nicholson. And with that, I'll entertain a motion on the floor to adjourn after the closing prayer.
Moved.
Motion by Counselor Boudreaux, seconded by Counselor Cormier. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?